I'd like to call the Camrio Sanitary District meeting for November 1st to order, please. And roll call, Ms. Madam.
Director McDonald.
Here.
Director Morgan.
Here.
Director Tremble.
Here.
Secretary Craven.
Here.
Chair Kilde.
Here. Mr. Morgan, would you lead us tonight in the flag salute?
Please stand. Lays your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
Oh, not yours, sorry.
Public comments for the Cam San District. All righty. Move down to consent calendar, please.
Move the approval.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Bearing none, please vote. That passes 5-0. Comments from staff tonight? I'm sure you'll have some later on, but would you like to lead us off here?
No comments.
Okay. All right. Any comments from board members tonight? No?
Just one. I think we might want to know about the winter CASA meeting, I mean, next summer's CASA meeting, our city manager, about what we may look at for next year.
The winter meeting?
The summer meeting.
Oh, the summer meeting, yes. We, based on last week's discussion about calendaring around the summer CASA meeting, the city clerk and I have discussed that. It looks like we're going to be able to work that out.
Good.
Isn't that part of our scheduling discussion?
It is. It will be. Prelimarily, we've been able to work that out.
Good.
And we will bring it forward for your full approval.
Anything else from anyone? So with that, we're going to research, recess.
You could do that, too.
We're going to recess to the 7:30 part of the agenda, which is the public hearing, and we'll be discussing an ordinance amending the sewer rate services. So with that, we're in recess.
I'll call the meeting of the Camrio City Council to order and let the record reflect that all council members are present. Do we have any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Anything to come out of the consent calendar?
Your Honor, I would like to pull D on the consent calendar, and I have a question on G when we get started.
Is D as in David?
D as in David would go to Administrative Services.
I didn't write that down, I'm sorry.
And you had a question on EREF.
E? G.
G, oh, G. I'm sorry.
I have a que, oh, Your Honor, I have a que, just a question on F.
Okay, so when we get there, we'll ask questions on those.
Tony's ready to say something.
You have some?
I had a question on F.
On F, okay. All right. With that, we will move on, and then we move on to the consent calendar. So first of all, we will pull D and move that back to Administrative Services. So we have questions on F. I believe, Mrs. Craven, you were fir, or Kevin was first on that one.
That's me. Yeah, my question on that, have we used Hughes Engineering before?
I believe, at least we've used them before, not real recently. However, we do know, and our consultants that we use on this project are very familiar with Hughes General Engineering. They are a local contractor based in Camrio. But we do know, and their references check out, that they perform many jobs successfully in the county. They've done some school district, recent school district work, and also other private work, so they're well qualified for this job.
I have two other questions. Do you know what components they're going to use for this project? In other words, is it, does it talk about the, and is it brick? Is it metal? Is it a?
For the wall, for the, the screen wall will be a block, a block masonry wall, right?
And there's going to be landscaping?
Correct. Yeah, the landscape with vines, yes.
And I have one, just one other question. The non-material bid irregularity has been addressed to your satisfaction?
Yes, that's correct. In consultation with the city attorney also, we feel it appropriate to wait.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Mr. Tremble.
I had a question on the staff report under Budget Impact, and indicated that the funds for the landscaping and monument project were included in our 1718 City Capital Projects Fund with a remaining budget balance of $102,253. But one of the portions of this recommended action by staff is an additional appropriation of $496,000 from the projects fund. Was that $102,000? That wasn't the estimated cost of hard costs for the project, was it? That was our design cost?
No, no. I've got a little bit more information to share on this, on this particular project. It's been in the CIP for quite a few years. And quite a while back, originally, what I understand, I wasn't here during, during that exact time, that the initial concept was to include masonry block screen walls and a cost estimate that was included in the CIP was somewhere in the figure round numbers of $500,000 for the project. Subsequently, moving forward with a concept of utilizing some type of fencing only with landscaping was anticipated. That resulted in a lower estimated cost that it was included in the CIP. After further thinking that through and vetting it, we reverted back to, now let's go ahead with, with the block walls. Essentially, the, the funding allocated in the CIP didn't catch up with where we got to through the design. And so now, we're at the point with the appropriate treatments out there to complete the screening and the landscaping and the monument sign, you know, resulted in an ultimate final cost that's higher than what we currently have budgeted in the CIP. That's why additional funding is necessary at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Law. That answers my questions. I do have a comment on it, but I can do that later.
Well, this is in the consent calendar, so you want to make your comment?
Well, when you add up the total, the total price, it's almost, it's just shy of $700,000. That is a lot of money. And it's of concern, it goes a long way in terms of the breadth of the wall, but that's an awful lot of money to pay.
So it is, it is the wall, and it's also the monument sign and the complete landscaping of that area also. And this total cost ends up being, you know, including the previously budgeted and expended amount for design services. And then this also includes the construction phase services for testing and inspection.
Okay. And then we also had a question on G.
My question on G is, looking at the map, excuse me, Factory Stores Drive is not included, is that correct?
That's correct. That was repaved, boy, it might almost be going on two years, year and a half ago or so. We did a full pulverization and repaving of Factory Stores Drive.
Okay.
That's been completed.
Okay.
That's it?
I have a question.
Anything else on G? Mr. Kilde.
Could I ask a question on D?
Go back to D. Okay.
D as in David?
D as in, oh, D we pulled. That's pulled. So we'll get to that when we get to admin, sorry. Okay, I think that was through the questions. I'll ask Mr. Tremble, you want to vote on that one separately, or are you okay to? I'll leave that to you. You can do that, ask if you like.
Yeah, I'd like to vote on that one separately. I'd like to find a less expensive route.
I will move the approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item D, which is being moved to Administrative Services.
Second with a question?
A second, we're not.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Item, what was that?
F.
F, which will be voted on separately.
Question for F, question F?
Oh, we're going to do F separately, so let's do.
Oh, I know, but I just wonder how many bids were done on that one?
Well, it's in the staff report. Let's take care of the consent calendar, mine is D and F. Any other comments or questions on that? If not, please vote. And that does pass unanimously. Okay, now we get to F. And if you go to F, your question, Mr. Morgan, there were one, two, three, four, five bids.
Right. I just want to make sure that we knew we did go through a whole bunch of people making bids on this. It wasn't like there's one. And that was our best bid.
I'd like to simply try to find, make another effort to find something less expensive.
I'll move the approval of the item.
A motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion, second. I need to make a comment on the, we went through quite a process of trying to find designs, and it was a lot of the screening an area that had never been, really been screened before. And that's why it was so long, besides being an entrance into the city. So that's why that one is a little bit more robust than some of the monument areas. Okay, we have a motion and a.
Well, I don't know, the other monument area down by.
Well, we got a grant for that one. Let's go ahead with that one.
But it was a lot more expensive.
It was a lot more expensive. You're right, you're right. Power bigger. Okay, we're voting on F. Please vote. And that does pass, yes, with Mr. Tremble voting no. Okay, that takes care of the consent calendar. Let's move to Administrative Services, which will be item D from the consent calendar.
Okay.
And that's the exterior painting of the police facility and additional appropriation.
Yeah, and I realize this is more than somebody had estimated, but I'm concerned, did we check all of the references and people who this company has done business with before?
Yes, we had Kevin Jorgensborg check out the references that, that this A.J. Fistis submitted. And they do a number of, they only do commercial buildings. They are, they've done many school districts in Southern California. And the response was that they were happy with the work. They were giving them scores of eight out of 10, nine out of 10. And we were satisfied with our reference checks on them.
Okay, it just somehow looks, I understand that the top two probably were, let's toss this amount out, and if we get it, we'll get it. But they're so far below the average and below everybody else that I just really question, and I hope we are happy with them.
I guess we have to trust them on that. But at least on this one, we saved money. Yes. Any other questions on item D from the consent calendar?
That was essentially my question, whether or not we've used them before and if we checked references.
We haven't used them before, but we, we did check the references, and they, these other people who have used them in the area seem to be quite happy with the product they got.
Have they done business with other agencies or businesses in Ventura County? Do we know?
Not in Ventura County, no.
Maybe they're trying to get their foot in the door.
Just wanted to follow up. Do they generally stay here, or do they go back to Long Beach and commute, or do you even know?
You know, the, the size of the facility or the PD would probably be about a two-week, it probably takes about two weeks, and they do different parts of it throughout, throughout that time. And so how they manage their, their crews, that's possible that they might come back and forth. I don't know that they just come in for that period of time and just remain. But it should be a, throughout a two-week process that they complete the, the project.
Well, if memory serves me correctly, I believe the bid for City Hall was very favorable as well.
I was about to say that, yeah. And maybe it's a matter of somebody trying to get their foot in the door to another area that they haven't been in before.
That could be, it will be, too.
But City Hall you've been happy with, haven't you? You've been happy with the work?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, please vote on item D from the consent calendar.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, we don't have a motion. Sorry about that. We were going, moving along. Do we have a motion? Mr. Tremble?
Second.
And second by Mr. Morgan, sorry about that. Please vote. And that does pass unanimously. I was just lumping it all together with the consent calendar. Okay, that gets us down to our evening calendar. We can quickly take care of informational items, so that's out of the way. And let's start with Mr. Kilde tonight. I'm sorry, I do this every night. City manager.
No items, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney.
No items.
Now, Mr. Kilde.
Just another, I think that traffic light that was installed has been very positive. I do notice that it's pretty bright there, and there is some residences there. So is there any talk about anything about that situation or not? It looks really good.
Looks excellent.
We haven't received any, any comments on that or any complaints.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's.
It's very well lit, which is helpful at an intersection.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, yes. We've only been, been a week since we've been here this time.
It's only been a week.
Mrs. Craven.
I attended the Policy Committee meeting on Friday morning, and I also attended a economic forecast meeting put on by Matthew Fineup from Cal Lutheran on Thursday. I have one question. I've been reading in the paper, and people in Newberry Park are not real happy with the changed flight pattern for LAX. And I've, a lot of people have been talking to me about how the Navy jets are coming in louder and lower. And I have noticed that they're coming in on a different flight pattern. We have what's called a dog's leg, and it's usually over, coming in by either, somewhere between Lewis Road and Santa Rosa Road, and they're coming over more by Temple. And, and that's fine, I mean, it's the sound of freedom, but in the J-Loos, the Navy made a big deal about, and I finally put together, maybe their flight pattern has changed, too. But when we were doing the J-Loos, they made quite a deal about when cities do something that affect the base, or might possibly affect the base, they would like us to notify them. And the one thing I kept saying was, whenever something changes in the Navy that affects Camrio, we would appreciate being notified, too. So maybe somebody could find out, and if the flight path to come into Magoo, these are touch and goes that I hear. Today, it was the same jet coming by about every 10 minutes, and it lasted maybe an hour. So somebody from Lemoore, it looked like a fighter, has, was obviously down doing some touch and goes, and then went on home. But if their flight path has changed, since a lot of our residents are concerned, and especially, I don't know how to describe it, the area down along the creek, those homes, people that live in there have been talking to me. But maybe somebody could come and make a presentation to us?
At least tell us what happened.
Tell us what's happened.
Now, the last time, when I was mayor, not this time, time before, there's two or three things happened. One was these, these fighters from France, remember those that went down Arneal Road? And they shook everybody up.
Yeah, that was an operation.
But, yes, I understand that. But there are also some that come in here. I was at Point Magoo not too long ago, and they, everyone has to do touch and goes for so many times, all the fighters do. And they usually do it out over the ocean and land. If someone you suspect is being lower, you call the base, and sometimes they tell them, get them up, because they're new.
No, it isn't that they're lower, it's just that it's a different flight path than normal.
Then you got to tell them, because they will.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
She's asking to find out why. I, I wasn't going to complain about it, because they've moved off from away, from our part of town, so it's your turn.
Well, as I said, I didn't mind, but a lot of people have asked me, and I've said, I don't know.
They're not used to hearing them, yeah. So maybe we can find out. Give us a report. That's all you have?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Morgan.
Your Honor, you're not going to see this ever, but I didn't, I was, between being a little ill and.
It's only been a week.
I haven't done anything, except what I had to, I mean, for city purposes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tremble.
No meetings to report. I did want to ask, I would ask staff to come back with an update on one matter that I had some residents ask me about, and that is the quiet zones issue and the status of that. I would like to get an update on that at some point in the near future from city staff on what the status is. I know it's in our CIP, and I know that it takes a long time. But again, I would appreciate a status report. That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. I just have a couple of things. I also attended the Policy Committee meeting, and that is an item that you, I think, see on the next agenda that we talked about, and that was.
Not here.
Yeah, that was the investment polit, policy for our retirement, that's the right word.
Your Honor, could I ask a question, if you're through? I'm sorry.
I mean, yes, you can, but I know I'm not through. Help me. Other post-employment benefits? OPEB. Thanks you. Went out of my mind. Two things. I understand that the county has received their economic strategic plan from their consultant, and I would appreciate if all council members are given a copy of that. So I think it's important to read, particularly as we look towards receiving ours. And my other one, I know that we're starting the weed abatement throughout the city, but the Amora Shopping Center has so many tumbleweeds, and if you drive down up Springville on a windy day, they attack you. So it, I think that one needs to.
Do you sing to them?
Some weird tumbleweed. Wow, they're going everywhere. So, so they may all be all over on Selix property now. They may not be on the shopping center anymore, but it's kind of, I can see people trying to dodge those things. So it's kind of different than the normal weeds. All right, Mr. Morgan, you have a question?
Yeah, next week, on the ninth, there's going to be a tour of the water supply for the whole county, a bus tour throughout the county. Did anyone get signed up for that? I'm going to be going.
I didn't know about it.
I've done it before.
It was, it was sent to us in the mail. And so, but there's going to be a tour of the water supply throughout our whole county on a bus tour, of course. I was putting on. And so if, no, I think they're maybe full now, because they were saying they're almost full. But I will bring back a report and maybe even pictures, who knows?
We do it every once in a while. I've done it before, so it's, it is interesting. It kind of gets, we all go and see the big picture, and it kind of gets it down to home. Okay, with that, is there anything? Okay, then if not, I turn to the city attorney and ask that he announce our closed session items.
Yes, we have two closed session items tonight. They're both a conference with real property negotiator authorized by Government Code Section 54956.8. One of them is the property located at 1643 Maple Creek Walk. The agency negotiators are listed in the agenda, as are the negotiating parties. Under negotiation are price and terms of payment. Our other closed session is a real property item, the former fire station, which is located at 2474 Ventura Boulevard. The agency negotiators and negotiating parties are listed in the agenda, and under negotiation on that property will be price and terms of payment.
Thank you. So with that, we will recess to a study session on Kid's Dream, which sounds exciting, and hopefully our closed session. So we are recessed until 7:30. We have been in a study session and in two closed sessions with no action to report. I'd like to have the secretary please call the roll.
Councilmember Tremble.
President.
Councilmember Morgan.
President.
Councilmember Kilde.
Here.
Vice Mayor Craven.
Here.
Mayor McDonald.
I'm here, thank you very much. Mr. Kilde, would you lead us in the flag salute today? Please rise and join us.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm assuming we have no changes to the agenda, but I'll ask just to be sure.
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Anything from council? If not, we move on to our presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation on being a bike-friendly city.
Good evening, council members.
Put my glasses on, now I know who you are.
Thank you very much for giving us a few minutes of time, particularly on a night when I'm sure everybody wants to get home. And I'm taping it, so I hope nobody will announce the score, at least while I'm here. But we have.
I'm sorry, Steve, would you give your name for the record?
My name's Steve Bennett. I'm on the Ventura County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
And we have a request that you adopt a bike-friendly resolution. We're asking all the cities in Ventura County to adopt a bike-friendly resolution. And I'll pass the resolution to your clerk to pass out to you. It is a resolution that we've passed at the Ventura County Board of Supervisors identifying Ventura County as a bike-friendly county. Santa Barbara County has also done this. And now we're starting to go around. The city of Ventura has done this, city of Santa Paula has done this, and you're the third city that we're asking. And essentially, it's your normal kind of wherethes and identifying some of the benefits of identifying yourself as a bike-friendly city and benefits for our residents. So at a future agenda item, we, at a future meeting, we would like you to agendize this if you would, if you're supportive of doing that. To introduce this bike-friendly resolution concept, I wanted to get you up to speed about something that's happening here. When we built the Pacific Bike Trail, and that's that really nice bike trail between, that's right in front of La Conchita, we really had, finally made the connection so that a family could safely ride from Ventura County to Santa Barbara County. You could ride from Camrio, and you could take the bike trails, and you could get up to Ventura, or you could drive to Ventura and park your car, and you could drive up, you could ride up the coast. You never could have done that before, because you literally had to ride right on the 101 freeway. And while we were at that event, the grand opening of that event, Supervisor Carbohall, who's now Congressman Carbohall, he represented the southern part of Santa Barbara County, and my district is that western part of Ventura. So we bumped into each other there, so we were there. So here we go, I guess I can, do I do the top, or do I do, there we go. So this is the grand opening of that Pacific Coast Bike Trail. And you see Supervisor Carbohall and Supervisor Kathy Long was there, and Supervisor Janet Wolf from Santa Barbara County. And so we had this conversation about the fact that Ventura County and Santa Barbara County have as fine of bicycling as there is in the world, literally. Year-round climate to bicycle, you can go from the beach to the mountains. And we realized that you, we have world-class biking environment, and it has, it's not known in the world like Southern France, like Tuscany, et cetera. But if you've biked in Tuscany and you've biked in Southern France, you find so many people saying, God, this is just like being in Ventura County. It's like being in Santa Barbara County. And because you have this, this great iconic Mediterranean climate. And so we started to push for this Cycle California Coast, and I'm going to go back to Cycle California Coast. That's this new group that we formed, and it's all volunteer, and about half the people come from Santa Barbara County, about half the people come from Ventura County. And it's, they're representatives of the tourism bureaus, representatives of bike clubs and bicycling interest, et cetera. And we said we wanted to try to identify Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties as national and international destinations for bicyclists. And so this is an example of what bicycling can do for businesses. And one big component of this is, this is Rabelais Bistro in Santa Paula. Rabelais Bistro, part of what we're doing with Cycle California Coast is we've created a website, and on that website, we have a list. And so if you're a bicyclist anywhere in the world, and you jump on the website and you want to bicycle here, you can find Cycle California. you want to bicycle here, you can find Cycle California Coast, and it identifies different routes that you can ride in Ventura County. It identifies bicycle-friendly businesses on those routes. And so a business can voluntarily sign up to be a bicycle-friendly business, and they only have to do a few things. And one of them is they have to have a place that you can park your bike, because these are expensive bikes. These bicycle tourists are riding in on $5,000, $8,000 bikes. They want to be able to see their bike while they're in your establishment. Rabelais came up with bicycle parking there in front of Rabelais, and you can see how packed the restaurant can be when one of these bicycle tours comes through. And this is a weekly event at Rabelais that they have a big, big showing like this. And so these bicycle-friendly businesses, we're starting to identify them on all the routes in Ventura County that we have. In Ojai, here's a place where you have to be able to hang your bike, identify bicycle-friendly. The Made West Brewery in Ventura, same thing, the Emporium in Ojai. And it is really a very exciting part of our effort. So we have a website, and we have an organization of all positive volunteers trying to make this happen. And we're super excited because the Amgen Tour of California is going to start in the City of Ventura. And we will be able to use that to promote Cycle California Coast and promote coming to Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties and bringing your tourism dollars there. Part of what we'd like to do is have all the local governments identify themselves as bike-friendly with that resolution. And it will help us as we approach businesses to say, would you like to be listed as a bike-friendly business? So there is in Oregon, an organization called Travel Oregon. And Travel Oregon is actually supported by a special tax in Oregon. And so they create these great videos, and they have really done a marvelous job in the state of Oregon promoting bicycle tourism. They have one of their short videos, it's about five or six minutes long, and that's the business case for being bike-friendly. And your staff is nice enough to have this set up on the web, and we'd just like to play this for you, and it'll be just about the end of my presentation to you.
Not waiting to ask a question.
What's that?
There are questions later.
Riding a bicycle has never been more popular in Oregon. Whether it's road riding, mountain biking, or traveling by bike, more and more people are exploring our state on two wheels. A recent study done by the Outdoor Industry Association shows that four out of five Americans own a bike. More Americans bicycle than golf, ski, tennis combined. In Oregon, bicycling is a quickly growing segment of our travel market. Thirty-one percent of all leisure visitors to Oregon rode a bike at some point during their stay, oftentimes as part of a trip with other recreational activities. In 2012, bicycle travel contributed $400 million to Oregon's tourism economy. On average, the bicycle traveler spends 20% more than a typical visitor. People enjoy visiting Oregon, and they love biking here. Bicycling is great for our tourism economy and great for business.
People show up here for the experience of riding by bike. It's great to see tourists that come to visit, rent a bicycle at their hotel, and are told either at the hotel or a bike shop or something that one of the things to do is to pedal here, sit out on the patio, and enjoy a beer and be part of the scene.
I can't believe the number of people that cycle as a hobby, or it's their passion, and they have routes specifically that they're coming either to do again, or that they've never done, or they've heard about through friends, that kind of thing. So it's pretty cool, whether they're mountain biking, or road biking, or just pleasure.
It's growing. The, the number of cyclists that cycle for recreation camaraderie kind of thing, there's more of them coming all the time.
You know, any small town, any chamber of commerce will tell you the same thing. Tourists are awesome for local businesses. Cyclists are very good at that. They need information, they use services, they get hotels, they help out restaurants, breweries, whatever it is.
In my experience, they are incredibly loyal people. I think working in the cycling industry, I find that people are very loyal to brands, and they're very loyal to their community, and they're very loyal to anybody who supports them.
Well, for one thing, they're just a very good crowd to work with, in particular. And, and it's a very, it's a kind of a tight community for the bicyclists. If you make one person happy, you're going to make 10 people happy.
We've had months or weeks where, out of eight or 10 people here, half of them are here for at least their second time. We've had people that have returned four times, with their same friends or with different friends, and brought other friends with them.
There's, there's really no downside to it. If you're a business, you want more customers, this is how you can have more customers.
Being bike-friendly is an easy step to more business in Oregon's booming bicycle tourism economy.
You know, they're on a mission. They're here to really get their passion fulfilled, their cup filled up while they're here. They go, and they're out most of the day, and then they come back, and they're like every other guest. They want to relax in a nice place and go have some fun.
They'll spend more, I think, typically than you would expect, because a lot of people, this is their passion. And I'm sure everybody knows you spend more money on your passion than you do on, on your obligations.
I think it's important for everybody to feel welcome in your business. Giving them the olive branch, say, hey, you're welcome here. You're opening yourself up to a whole new element of, of people who will come and enjoy your business and be loyal customers.
Because bicycle-related tourism is important to Oregon's economy, businesses and communities around the state want to reach this market. Travel Oregon has developed the nation's first statewide bike-friendly business recognition program targeting travelers. The Oregon Bike Friendly Business Program will help you reach cyclists, as well as give you the tools you need to cater to this growing segment of our tourism economy. Become a bike-friendly business today.
So I have Brian Brennan on my staff here, and Brian is the coordinator of the Bike Friendly Business part of our program. And as you heard them say, in Oregon, they're the first in the, in the country to have a bike-friendly business program. We think, we're not certain, but we think we're the first in the state of California to have a bike-friendly business program. And we're really excited and looking forward to having this expand throughout all of Ventura County, have more and more routes out there. The Board of Supervisors has committed to expand our funding for paving bike paths, paving shoulders, so that we have more bike paths. We want to connect all 10 cities, make it easy for people to ride from one city to the other. And this is, I think, a special time for us to really kick it in gear, and we really hope that you would support us with a bike-friendly resolution. And anything else you can do to, to alert people that there is this positive effort out there between Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties to try to market Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties as truly spectacular bicycle destinations for people both nationally and internationally. So thank you very much, and be happy to answer any questions.
Just before you get to questions, how does this tie in with VCTC just finishing the bike path and the guidebook and all of that?
Well, VCTC was already on its own doing a wayfinding study at the same time that we were developing this program. And so what VCTC really appreciated about it is that we have all these bicyclists that are there, et cetera. So they could come and say, this is what we think, this is where we think the route is. And the bicyclist go, no, we don't ride that route, we ride this route because there's this reason, that reason. So there's a lot of synergy and, and matching between the Cycle California Coast and VCTC. So they, yeah, and VCTC usually comes to the Cycle California Coast meetings. And we would encourage you, if you would like to have your, whoever's on your staff, city staff that wants to attend, everybody is welcome to come and attend. We have Derek from the City of Ventura is there and, and other people, and they work on. So we have three, we have to have four major committees that are there. One is infrastructure, as you could imagine, what, what infrastructure needs do we have? The other one is marketing, and the marketing includes the bike-friendly businesses side of it, and how do we market it? And they're really excited with the tour of California coming to Ventura. And then we have what's called wayfinding and the bicycling experience, and that's bicyclists in Ventura County that go out and identify, they literally take video of a route, and they'll go, look, this is really a cool route, and this is where you stop, so that somebody can sit there and plan a trip here in Ventura County and hear from actual bicyclists about how this trip would be if you went this way, that way, et cetera. Getting off the ground, I just think it's really ready to, to pop and expand.
Great. Question. Tell us again the name of your group.
Cycle California Coast. And this is a bike-friendly business plaque that goes up in your business if you identify yourself as a bike-friendly business. That means you, you'll have water, you'll have a restroom, you'll, you could potentially help with bike repair, but you will definitely have good parking, right?
It's not going to say Ride Oregon.
What's that? Not going to say Ride Oregon. That's just an example of what, what they have, and we have one very similar to that.
Okay. My, my real question was, if at a, on a later agenda we adopt this, you're not going to come back and ask us to paint all our bike lanes bright green, are you?
No, but, but our infrastructure committee is, is always talking about what are the things that, that can be done, but there's, there's no-
Ventura's the only city I've ever seen that has those bright green ones.
And it really is very important in some places, down on Seaward, where you see those, those bright green ones.
I see them there.
It's, we had so many cars riding, you know, driving in the bicycle, and it was hard to tell where the bicycle lane was. And with that, all of a sudden, everybody could really tell, oh, that's the bicycle lane.
They're also on Main.
Yeah, they have expanded that and stuff, and it's, it's making things much safer and making bicyclists feel a lot safer. You know, just show you, this is an example of one of the loops. This is the Grand Loop connecting Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties. And this is just one of, and we tried to pick one route to start with, just because it's overwhelming to try to do everything. And we now have many bicycle-friendly businesses on this, about half of it in Santa Barbara County, half of it in Ventura County. And this goes up 126 to Santa Paula, up to Ojai, and then back through Lake Acetus and on into Santa Barbara. And Camrio is, is certainly going to be well-placed because we have, we're really pushing the bike trail between the university and here. And then with Camrio being so centrally located, I think you could find a lot of bicy, a lot of bicycle tourists that would come through here.
Mr. Morgan.
You just answered one of them, because I was going to say, where is the county on getting that bike path from Poncho Road over the hill into the university? Because that was one of those potential ones, too. Is that going to be worked on?
We have, we have, the wayfinding study has identified all of the paths in Ventura County, and then it's just a question of when you can come up with the funds. Interestingly, the County of Ventura, and I was, literally my jaw fell off, and he laughs about it when I say it, but Peter Foye made the motion after watching literally this presentation. He made the motion to say, let's fund all of the bike lanes in what we called our B category. We already had the A done, and he said, let's just do all the Bs. And it's probably going to be about $2 million a year for five years, and we'll have all of our B projects done. And it'd be a dramatic improvement. But he said, hey, I'd rather spend the money on infrastructure where we actually get something than something else. And I was delighted, and the board supported that 5-0. But these, these bike-friendly requests are not, they don't come with any financial tie. It doesn't say, you're now committed that you have to do this or that. It's, we recognize everybody's got that, but it, it, it just tries to elevate bicycling in Ventura County and how important it is. And certainly with all the issues about climate change and traffic and everything else, you have a, a, a growing segment of people that are interested in having Ventura County become more bike-friendly.
I have a couple more questions. One is, I hired your trail from Ojai to the coast, okay? County built it. I think they need to help us. We have a trail that no one can get from Simi Valley to the ocean. If they can come through Camrio, they can. And we just okayed a trailhead on an improvement right near Upland Road now, where bikers can catch our path and actually go all the way to the ocean. Now, why can't we get that path completed to Simi Valley so people can ride along by the, maybe by the railroad track, like they did by the freeway in Santa Paula?
When you, when you say the county helped, the county basically got grants, that's the Omar Raines Trail, and there were grants that, most of these trails in the past have been funded by some kind of grant funding that, that comes out there. So it's a, it's, it really comes down to a matter of identifying grant funding and some, some government agency taking the lead in terms of trying to push for the funding for that particular-
Has any, has, it's all in county land. Has the county even looked at that to try to see if, because that would be a major trail going all the way from Simi through Moore Park all the way out.
I haven't heard specifically about the wayfinding tra, the wayfinding from Simi and Moore Park through Ventura County. But we could look at the VCTC wayfinding plan, and if it's in the VCTC wayfinding plan, then you would certainly find the county, as it'd be one of the things we'd be eventually trying to get funding for.
I don't know if it is or not, but it used to be back when I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee before they had VCOG, they had that other thing, and whatever that was. It was called Simi to the Sea.
Simi to the Sea, exactly.
That was the bike path that was identified.
Half of it's done.
And it would, and it makes a lot of sense, and I'd be surprised if it wasn't there, but I just don't, I just don't have that memorized in terms of where the bike trails are.
Anything else?
Only that, you did finish the one between Ventura and Santa Paula, because I remember when they were fighting for that one. The farmers next to it were complaining and so on and so forth.
We have not finished that.
You haven't?
No, the farmers still blocked it, but we are working hard with Limoneira and some other growers, and I think we're very close to having them say yes. But unfortunately, when they said no, the grant funding that we had for that went away. And so now you have to start the process all over again in terms of trying to-
Well, come over here and try on our side, you might get better response.
Try what?
On our side, between here and Simi, you might get better response. Yes.
Now, that's really a special trail, when you think about, we bought that railroad easement for that kind of access, and then-
Look where that went.
There you go. We're waiting, we've been asking for a long time.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Kildee?
Just one really quick question, Steve, if you wouldn't mind. So this basically, in your opinion and others' opinion, would help the business community in Ventura County, then?
I think without a doubt, you know, I, I don't do it justice, but when you have the business tourism people, if you happen to, if you were interested and wanted to watch the Ventura County Board of Supervisors meeting where we adopted this bicycle-friendly resolution, which was the May 27th meeting, Marla Soster, who is the head of the Ventura Visitors Bureau, she really makes a compelling case about how good this is for businesses. I'll, I'll show you here, there's a few more PowerPoint slides, I wanted to get to that. These are signs that have been installed, and you see the Grand Loop on the left, that's one of, that's the Cycle California Coast, that's that trail we talked about, that connection between Ventura and Santa Barbara County. Our county fire stations are now putting repair tools and having the fire station be a place where you can go and repair a bike at select fire stations. And again, you can enjoy great cycling along the coast. But this last slide, in answer to your question, Councilmember Kildee, this last slide is the one that Marla put together, and that is, the sector is underperforming in travel-related impacts relative to the state and to competitor regions. There is opportunity for growth, and we're talking about bicycle tourism, both in the broader leisure and hospitality sector, and especially in travel-related activity. And our regional economic sustainability depends on this sector's success. So it certainly is, and we're getting tremendous support from businesses for this.
Hey, great. Well, thank you for coming to see us, and we will definitely put this on the agenda and talk about it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that takes care of our presentation. We move on to public comments. This is the time on the agenda where members of the public can address the council on items not on the agenda. And just to go over some of those rules, everyone gets three minutes, and there is a clock that I can see and a clock that you can see. And it counts down, when it gets to one minute, it, it makes a noise and turns yellow, so you know it's time to start wrapping it up. And we ask that you give your name for the record before you start. You don't have to give your address, just your name. And with that, we will start. I see that I think I have a family here, so I'm going to give you a choice of who wants to talk first. But we have Kevin, Evan, and Kimberly Grimm. So I'll let you three choose who wants to start.
Thank you. My name is Kimberly Grimm, and the issue I'm commenting on is on minor children being exposed to pornography via the adult-use computer screens being visible at the City of Camrio Public Library. The law allows adult-use computers that are unfiltered to be available to patrons 18 years and older at the public library. Adult library patrons can view pornography at the library. This is their First Amendment right. The City of Camrio has an obligation to ensure that the adult-use computer screens are not visible to minors. This action does not violate any person's First Amendment right. The City has known that the adult-use computers are positioned in an area that is highly utilized by minors and highly visible to minors- by minors and highly visible to minors for years. They're positioned in a high-traffic area of the library and visible to everyone. The City has a legal obligation to ensure that minors are not exposed to the computer screens of the adult-use computers. When adult-use computers are displaying pornography and the computer screen is visible to minors, that is illegal exposure of minors to pornography. The City of Camerio is in violation of the Protect Act of 2003. The City is knowingly exposing minors to pornography at the Camerio Public Library. The City has known about this for years, and the library director was directly informed about this issue about a year ago from a parent whose children were victims of pornography exposure at the Camerio Library. Since that parent complaint, the City has taken no steps to remedy this issue. Federal law states that it is illegal for an individual to knowingly use interactive computer services to display obscenity in a manner that makes it available to a minor less than 18 years of age. This law does not just apply to having filters on the library computers, it also applies to adult-use computer screens being visible to minors. The privacy screen that is currently in place is useless to prevent minors from being exposed to the pornography. The City is transparently aware of the issue and has neglected to take proper action. The City has knowingly allowed minors to be exposed to pornography displayed on the adult-use computer screens for years. The City of Camerio and all governments have a compelling interest in protecting children from harmful materials. The City has an interest in restricting minors' access to sexually explicit materials. This includes ensuring that pornographic material being viewed by adult patrons of the library on unfiltered computers is not visible to minors. The City currently puts the responsibility on the minor to prevent themselves from being exposed to the pornography. However, society does not hold children to a higher standard than adults. It is the responsibility of the City of Camerio, not the responsibility of the minor. The City's legal obligation does not cease because the City claims that capital improvements require study and future consideration. The City needs to make this an urgent priority. The City needs to do whatever it takes to ensure minors are not exposed to pornography today. Letting one more minor be illegally exposed to pornography is not acceptable. There are no more excuses for the City of Camerio. If the City needs to put up a drape or a shower curtain until capital improvements can be studied and considered, then do it. Do it today, not tomorrow. Do not remain complicit in allowing one more child to be exposed needlessly to pornography.
Thank you for bringing this to us, to the City Council. I'll ask the City Attorney to just give you a little update on, since we've heard about this incident, what is going on and what will occur.
Well, I could tell you that the matter is under review by the City to determine what appropriate actions will be taken. There are First Amendment rights that need to be considered, and in light of that, we will need to determine what actions would be appropriate. No decisions have yet been made, as this is still under review by the City.
Question, can I ask a question, City Attorney?
But the main thing is, is that, oops, excuse me, you brought it to the City Council this time, and we are working with staff to do what we can to remedy this situation.
Question. Yeah, this is the first time I've heard about it. So you say the City knows, we don't know. We're the ones that have to do something, you know, to direct the City where to go, the staff. And a question I have is, and I know you've got the First Amendment rights and all that, but do we have to allow pornography to be viewed at our public library?
Well, what we do have to allow under the court decisions is access by adults upon request, and we need to remove the filter with respect to that. With regards to what the filter can reveal, I do know that there was a stipulated judgment that was entered into by the County of Ventura prior to the City of Camerio acquiring the library as a city library. And under that stipulation, there was a change in the wording of a policy with respect to patrons being prevented from displaying obscene materials. So my answer to you would basically be this. This was just brought, at least to my attention, this either a day or two ago. So we've been looking at it, we're going to continue to look at it, and we will review it. And so, once we've completed that review, which is not going to take a long period of time, but it's going to take some period of time, to review it, to determine legally what can be done by the City with respect to this matter, there will be consultations with the City Manager, we'll advise the City Council as to what their legal options will be, and certainly, it'll be a matter that's going to be looked into.
That means where we can go on restricting pornography at the library?
Yes.
Can you get a report on that? I'm sorry.
The main thing is, is to protect the children.
Period. Yes.
Yeah, and I will say that from my investigation into this, that is a First Amendment right to view pornography at the library, but where I'm coming at it is, the screen should not be visible to passersby. I'm not saying, don't allow them to have their First Amendment right, I'm just saying, my child should not have to walk by those computers and see that activity.
Well, that's why we want to explore, is this a First Amendment right to be able to see pornography in a public place?
They're telling us it is.
And he hasn't told me it is. He's going to bring, he says he's going to bring it back to us.
That's not what she's talking about. She's talking about the fact that children have been exposed--
Children, no, I know that, and we need to stop that, too. But I'd like to see if we can go further.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So it's either Kevin or Evan. There you go, perfect.
Today, I will be speaking to you about the library pornography issue and how it has affected me and my learning. A child's education is one of the most fragile things, and it is one of the most important standards in society. When I go to the library to study and get all of my homework done, and I see pornography, it messes with my brain. When I was exposed to pornography on Friday, I was shocked. I was saying to myself, what is this? I told my mom, even though I knew she would not be happy with it. I knew this material, being visible to me, should not be allowed at the library. The privacy screen did not block the view of the in-computer, and that is where I saw the pornography. I was just walking by to the restroom, minding my own business, when I was exposed to the This has affected my life, because even though I did know the body parts of both male and female, I did not know that the butt was also an entrance, not just an exit. Once I saw this, I asked my mom, and she said that she wasn't ready for me to learn this yet, and she was very, very angry. When she went down to the library to complain, I heard one of the most horrifying words of my life. We cannot do anything. These four words crushed my dreams. They could not do anything about the issue, not move the adult computers to another section, not get a better privacy screen, they could not do anything. I knew this not to be true, and that is why I'm speaking here today. Thank you.
Thank you. And can you give your name? Are you Kevin or Evan?
I'm Evan.
Evan, thank you, Evan, for coming.
I'm Evan, that was Evan, I'm Kevin. I'm not going to read anything, I just wanted to make a statement. I'm here to back my wife up and my son up. And I've been a lifelong resident here of Camerio. I was really surprised at the reaction from some of the people we've contacted, saying they couldn't do anything, it was their First Amendment right. And we're not trying to take away First Amendment rights, we're just trying to keep the children from seeing these computers, because these people sit there, watching the computer screen, sitting back as children walk by. And we're aware of probably a dozen kids who've seen this. And on Friday, when my son had told us about it, there were quite a few kids gossiping about it, videotaping it on their phones. And I just wanted to make everybody aware of it, and hopefully we can do something to fix it.
Okay, thank you so much for coming.
Excuse me, they were videotaping, they went over, like he didn't start videotaping it, or?
There's a privacy screen on one of the four sides. And it's ridiculous that they thought that this would actually stop the viewing of all the different computers in all the different areas. But they have one privacy screen up, and it had two-inch gaps.
So they put their cameras in there and videoed it?
So the one boy had told my son about it, and he's known about it for a year. His younger daughter have known about it since they were about nine years old. And they told him, and then they decided they were going to get proof, you know, and they were going to videotape through the privacy screen, which is openings about that far. But we went there on Sunday to get a look at what was going on there. And within just a few minutes, walked past a guy who had a, there was a privacy screen, the privacy screen stops five feet away, he's viewing pornography, he's sitting back. And my wife walked up, couldn't believe it, took pictures of what he was viewing. And it was graphic stuff, and he just turned to her and said, this is my First Amendment right, you know? And he wasn't worried about anybody seeing what he was doing, he wasn't bashful about it. And there's a wide-open corridor where people walk by, you know, not just to go to the bathrooms, to go check out books. And there's mini computers that are easily visible, so.
Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, for all of you coming tonight. We truly appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
And we'll see what we can do about all this. We're adults, we ought to be able to solve this. Thank you. Okay. Looks like we have four other speaker sheets, and they seem to be on, I believe, the same topic. So I will start with Doris Tapp. Are you all together? Oh, you're separate, okay, so it doesn't matter if you go in a certain order. Okay, then Doris, please. Tell me who that is. Is that Mildred or Pat? Okay, Pat, if you'd like to come forward, give us your name for the record. And I guess you can introduce this item, then.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Patricia Errett, and I'm here on behalf of those of us in the community who are concerned about the environment, and who would like to have more of our electricity come from renewable sources. There's a Community Choice Energy Program that's already in existence in Los Angeles that Arc City could join. I'll refer to it as LACC. It's nonprofit, it's already set up. And it would work seamlessly with Southern California Edison in providing electricity as early as next year. Initially, the City would choose the percentage of electricity that would come from renewable sources, and then after, eventually, the customers could decide. And the customer can always opt out. This program would provide greater levels of local involvement in energy decisions. It would increase significantly the amount of renewable energy available to Camerio's energy customers. It would provide initial price stability, long-term electricity cost savings, and other benefits for Camerio. It would reduce greenhouse gases that are created by creating electricity now for Camerio. And joining is free for the City if we sign up before December 27th. I've submitted some information, along with my blue slip, on the LACC to the council, and I ask that joining the LACC be placed on the agenda for our next city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Staff, I believe we joined going north rather than going south, a similar?
Actually, we have not joined a CCE. We were involved in a study. That study proved to be infeasible for a combined CCE that would involve Santa Barbara County and Ventura County because you have PG&E and Edison. The rates from Edison are already competitive, and that's why it made it financially infeasible.
Well, you can see, we're trying. So next, we have, I'm going to give you a choice again, Doris, Mildred, or Todd? Just let us know, give your name for the record.
I'm just requesting that we have this on our agenda the next meeting. It seems like it is time-sensitive if we join to save electrical energy footprint by using renewable sources. It seems like a very sensible idea. That's all I'm asking, is on the agenda so we can discuss it?
Great, and are you Mildred or Doris?
I'm Mildred.
Mildred, and your last name is Sideman? Great, thank you.
Question, question, question? Hello, Mildred. Come back. In between LA County and us are a couple, three other cities, Thousand Oaks, Westlake, part of Westlake, Simi Valley and Moore Park and so on. Have any of those joined this? Because they're kind of like in front of us, as far as the cities of Alcendras County are concerned.
I don't think it interferes with our joining.
I know, but have any of those cities joined?
I don't know that.
If we do this, you might want to come back with a lot of information.
I'm planning to come back when it's on the agenda, if you put it there.
Thank you. So we have Doris Tapp or Todd Schuman?
I'm Doris Tapp, and I just, I'm interested in the saving the use of renewables, having renewables on the docket. And I'd like to hear more about it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And last, we have Todd Schuman?
My name's Todd Schuman, I live here in Camerio, 2260 Camalar. I am also in support of the proposal that the City consider and look at the possibility of participating in the Los Angeles County Community Choice Energy aggregation. It needs to be an agenda item so we can have a full discussion concerning this whole issue. There is a lot of misrepresentation and inaccuracies concerning this feasibility study. This feasibility study was severely flawed, and that's a serious understatement. And we have had experts go through it and pore over it, and it's almost like this study was designed to, you know, sabotage this kind of proposal when Community Choice Energy is happening all over the state. It's happening in Lancaster, it's happening in Marin County, Sonoma, San Francisco. You have all sorts of cities that are participating in this in Los Angeles County. We need to look at this rather than just deep-six it because of a very poor feasibility study. I want to quote a few things from the Community Environmental Council of Santa Barbara and their critique of the study, and if you'll pardon me, I've got to put on my six eyes. I just want to say something. The pricing assumptions between the consultant and the peer review in this study varies by 30%. The Willdan Study appears to assume renewable prices averaging about $80 per megawatt-hour. Current prices for wind and solar photovoltaics are closer to $40 per megawatt-hour. This difference could add about $40 million to program costs. The study also predicts a flat utility escalation rate, while the peer review forecasts more robust increases. There's a whole bunch of other stuff. There's also another thing, you brought up a point about the other cities. Actually, these issues are being, this issue is being raised before the Moore Park City Council tonight as we speak. And also, you don't, there's no require of contiguous between the cities concerning participation in this program. We don't need to have the cities right next to LA County to be able to participate in this. One thing that this program would allow, let me see if I can find my thing, at some point, the customers will have a choice of 30% or 50% or 100% renewable energy in their electricity mix. Again, if we make a decision to explore this before December 27th, there is no cost, and the City can pull out of it if they decide it doesn't work and they don't want to participate. There's no cost to the City, and it's much likely to be cheaper than what we're seeing a lot, because just the economies of scale are going to ramp up dramatically. So please put this on the agenda at the next meeting so we can have a discussion about this before the December 27th deadline. And I speak that as a citizen. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. I'm going to turn this to Staff, and Staff can look at it and determine whether to bring it forward, and, because I know you need to do a little research on it.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, Staff will not be prepared by the next council meeting to be able to give you any meaningful information for a full and robust debate. I am seriously doubtful that we can meet this deadline for you to feel comfortable and for Staff to make a comfortable recommendation. If you want us to bring it back later, we certainly can, but it's going to take-- If you want us to bring it back later, we certainly can, but it's going to take some time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for coming. Okay, that does indeed, some second. Second. We, first of all, would anyone else in the audience like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Okay, so when no one comes forward, we'll move on to our public hearings. We do have two public hearings this evening. The first one is an introductory ordinance amending Chapter 19.55 of the Camerio Municipal Code pertaining to cannabis marijuana facilities, cultivation, and deliveries, adoption of urgency ordinance extending temporary moratorium. Set the city?
Yeah, that'll be my item. So actually, we're going to be considering two ordinances tonight, and I'll explain why. There will be a permanent cannabis ordinance as well as a proposed extension of the existing urgency ordinance. So we know that under the state law, we had Proposition 64 was passed by the voters in November of 2016, basically legalized what is referenced as adult-use marijuana, also known as recreational marijuana. Then in June of 2017, SB 94 was passed. It combined the regulatory schemes between medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana so that now this is known as the Medicinal and Adult-Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. It's found in the Business and Professions Code. Here's the key features of state law with respect to recreational cannabis. First of all, cities may completely prohibit all cannabis businesses. Secondly, the state will not issue a license if to do so would violate a city ordinance. So to pause on those first two points, this basically gives the city some amount of control with respect to recreational marijuana. Thirdly, the state anticipates issuing business licenses as of January 1, 2018. So if the city were to have an ordinance that allowed a business, it would be in January of 2018 that the state would be issuing licenses. The fourth thing is that individuals may possess up to 28.5 grams of cannabis legally, and they may cultivate up to six plants. Number five, there may be no more than six plants that are cultivated at any time at a private residence. Six, cities may reasonably regulate private indoor cultivation, but you cannot prohibit it. The terms reasonably regulate are not currently defined in the statute. However, the state is in the process of preparing regulations to implement Proposition 64, and those regulations have not yet been provided. It is possible that the regulations may provide further description of what a reasonable regulation is. Number seven, cities may completely prohibit outdoor cultivation. And finally, assuming that a city did allow a type of cannabis business with respect to retailers and cultivators, they could impose a tax on that. All right. With respect to the location for cannabis use, the question's often asked about where cannabis may be used in terms of being smoked or ingested. The first rule is it cannot be smoked or ingested in a public place. Once again, the word "public place" is not defined in the code, but it generally means any place that is reasonably accessible to the public without a barrier. So the smoking and ingestion of cannabis, for example, would not be allowed in a parking lot, either a public parking lot or a private parking lot, on the street, on the sidewalk, in a park, any place that the public has access to. That would most likely, in my opinion, include a front yard of a home that is not completely fenced. So if the front yard is exposed to individuals who would then be able to approach, like say, the front door without having to go through a gate or a fence, my opinion is that's a public place, and smoking of marijuana or cannabis would not be permitted there. Contrast that to a backyard situation that would be fenced, that would not be public, and the use of cannabis would be allowed there. The second rule is that there can be no smoking of cannabis where smoking tobacco is prohibited. You have a fairly robust ordinance in terms of limiting smoking of tobacco. If there was an interest by the council at a future date of looking into an expansion of the current limitations on smoking of tobacco, we could look at that. And if you did adopt such a broadened tobacco-smoking limitation, then that would equally apply to cannabis. The third rule is that there's, under Prop 64, there can be no smoking of cannabis within 1,000 feet of a school, daycare center, youth center while children are present. Number four, no smoking or ingesting at a school, daycare center, or youth center while children are present. Five, no smoking or ingesting of cannabis while driving or a passenger of a vehicle, boat, or aircraft. Don't know why my clicker's not working. Oh, I wasn't pushing it hard enough. All right. What are the rules on indoor cultivation? First of all, the city may impose reasonable regulations. As I said before, that's not a defined term. We do know that indoor cultivation does have risks. There was an incident, this should be 2016. September of 2016, there was a New York City battalion chief who was killed when there was an indoor grow operation, and there was an explosion during that cultivation. I don't recall specifically if there was the use of some gas products in that indoor cultivation, but whatever it was, it exploded, and a part of the roof came down and killed a battalion chief. There was another incident that more recently occurred and closer to home. On August 21 of 2017, there was an indoor grow in a garage in Morro Bay, and this was the result of what happened there. There was electrical wiring that got overloaded, resulted in a fire. You can see what happened to the garage. There was also damage to two adjacent homes. So indoor cultivation certainly has risks associated with it. So what are the key features of our proposed permanent ordinance? First of all, all cannabis businesses would be prohibited. That means any kind of business. That's cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, testing, and retail sales. Number two, the ordinance that's in front of you provides for no outdoor cultivation. As I said before, you do have the authority to prohibit outdoor cultivation. This ordinance prohibits it. With respect to indoor cultivation, remember, you can have reasonable regulations in that regard. And so the proposed reasonable regulations, the indoor cultivation is limited to six plants, that's per Prop 64, inside their private residence or a secured accessory structure. Provided that, and then these are the kind of the rules that go along with this. You must have, and the ordinance says, written consent of the property owner. So if you are a tenant in a home, or an apartment, or a condominium, you need to have the written consent of the owner of that building to be able to grow marijuana. Secondly, oops. Secondly, you must comply with building codes, and we saw just a moment ago about why that's important with respect to not setting up your indoor grow operation in a manner that's unsafe. And thirdly, cannot use gas products, CO2, butane, et cetera, to assist with the indoor cultivation. And the third rule is with respect to deliveries, there would be no deliveries of cannabis in Camarillo except by a primary caregiver to a qualified patient. Now, in your red folder, I circulated Section 19.55030B, which does in fact reflect that the delivery would be limited by a primary caregiver to a primary patient. There was some discussion about whether or not to permit other kinds of deliveries. However, it's my recommendation at this point that the deliveries be limited to the circumstance that's here on the screen, just by primary caregivers to qualified patients. If at some future date, the council had an interest in expanding the delivery opportunities for cannabis in Camarillo, then that could perhaps be something that's looked at. But at least at this point, my recommendation is that we limit it to primary caregivers of medicinal cannabis only to qualified patients. And those are all defined terms in the Health and Safety Code. All right, so here's our schedule. If you recall, we had a study session on September 17th, went to the Planning Commission with the proposed ordinance on October 17th. They had very good comments that were well-taken, and we did, in fact, add a provision to define what an accessory structure is. And so that's found in the ordinance as well. Let's see where I put that. Yes, it's in big page 13 at the top, under 1955010. This addition of the definition of accessory structure came out of that Planning Commission discussion. I believe it was Commissioner Murphy that had raised this question. And so we did, in fact, add a definition of accessory structure for where you can have an indoor grow. And it means that it'd be a completely enclosed and secure structure, and where required by law, must be constructed pursuant to a building permit issued by the city. So you would be able to have an indoor grow in your residence or in a secured accessory structure only. All right. So that was what we took from the Planning Commission. Then tonight, we're having our first reading on the permanent ordinance. We're also proposing an extension of the existing ordinance on the moratorium. The reason for that is that the current moratorium expires on November 16th. This permanent ordinance is not going to become effective until 30 days from your second reading. Your second reading would most likely be November 15th, so it would not be effective until December 15th. We don't want to have a gap between current moratorium and the effective date of your permanent ordinance. So the temporary ordinance or the urgency ordinance will be enacted. At least, that's our recommendation for tonight, to extend it. And then we can always repeal that urgency ordinance in January so that we're just left with the permanent ordinance once that becomes effective. So as I've said, the permanent ordinance will become effective on November 14th, excuse me, December 14th, and then we can come back to you in January to repeal the moratorium. So that's a summary of the ordinance and the reason for the extension of the urgency ordinance, and I'm prepared to respond to questions.
Yes, this is on what was sent out, or what wasn't sent out, but with regard to 19.55.030B. Just a minute. Excuse me. The last sentence in that, whichever version you're looking at, says, "These deliveries are subject to the following requirements. Deliveries are permitted, are only permitted, to occur between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And two, the delivery must be in an unmarked vehicle. And three, deliveries are only permitted to a private residence." And what I got to thinking about was, so the people who have talked to me about this are people who, generally speaking, are older, not as old as me, but older, and tell me that they need it for pain. And so what I was wondering about is, as a lot of people get older, they move into some kind of a group home, which is not a private residence. But this would not be allowed to be delivered to one of those places that has six people or whatever it is that the state? And I was wondering, I don't remember discussing that, I had just had thought about it, but those people might need it too.
But if I could add on to that, I don't remember having that at all. I thought we stopped at it has to be delivered by a primary caregivers to a qualified patient.
That's right.
So why are we on the red line? I caught it in here where you said that it could be delivered and all that stuff, but shouldn't you just continue to mark all that out and just stop at caregivers' qualified patients?
Actually, Commander Murray was the one who had recommended that we include the language that was referencing about the deliveries being subject to those three requirements in terms of a time limitation of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Because otherwise, if it's being delivered on a 24-hour basis, it could, you know, a delivery vehicle could arrive at, you know, midnight or 3:00.
A lot of these caregivers arrive in one of three shifts, and some of them in my neighborhood arrive at midnight.
But I think that would be true if you left number two in there. But once you took out number two, that we don't allow deliveries except by private caregivers, then you don't need the next part about delivery schedule.
Well, let me say this. This is totally within your discretion as to whether or not you want to impose these limitations or not. Perhaps Commander Murray might explain why he thought these limitations would be appropriate. I included them at his recommendation from the standpoint of law enforcement.
Okay. I guess our question, and I don't know if you have it before you? He needs the red line one to see what's been struck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, so when this topic came up, really, I was looking at it too from what other agencies are doing with respect to time, place, and manner. And as you know, this is sort of untested territory with respect, you don't know really what you're going to get. So the issue, you know, of an unmarked vehicle is obviously important. You don't want, you know, vehicles traversing through your city that are marked with something that would connect it to a marijuana delivery service. And then the place became an issue. Do you want it going to a bar? Do you want it going to a nightclub? Do you want it going to a college campus? So you can have a whole spectrum of locations where this could be delivered to that could be problematic. And then on the third front, in terms of, you know, the private residence, you know, that's kind of a starting point. And Vice Mayor, you make a valid point. I mean, there's probably going to be some flexibility within the language there that could be used. But the goal really was to sort of streamline it so that you didn't have an all-hour operations that would create sort of this underworld proposition where you get a bunch of calls for service at 3:00 in the morning at an apartment complex where it looks like you have a hand-to-hand sales and a bunch of traffic going up in hotel rooms. So that was sort of the logic in dealing with some, sort of the parameters with respect to the delivery service.
And would that still be true now that we've taken it out, the delivery part, and says that it can only be delivered by a primary caregiver to a primary caregiver's qualified patient? Do you still need those restrictions?
Well, yes, because of what if that patient's at a bar? Do we want them, do you want them delivering?
Excepted at a bar, okay.
Right?
Okay.
So you get into that sort of public, sort of transaction that we really kind of want to steer clear of.
Gotcha.
And then it wouldn't just be in a, like, delivery to a bar, for example? Do you want it delivered at a public park?
Yeah, I can see that.
Do you want it delivered on the street corner? So those are the reasons. And we could, to address Councilmember Craven's point, on the third issue where it says deliveries are only permitted to a private residence, a private residence is defined at the top of that page as a house, an apartment unit, a mobile home, or other similar dwelling. It would seem to me that the group home example that was given by Councilmember Craven would most likely fall under the definition of a similar dwelling, because it is like a...
Where they live.
It's where you live, basically. And that is language that I took from the Health and Safety Code. So my opinion would be that the group home example would be one that there could be a delivery on.
Okay. With this, could we ask Commander Murray if that's the way you read that?
Yes. Certainly can be interpreted that way, absolutely.
But what if I live at the bar?
You live at the bar?
I don't.
Well, if you live in an apartment above it, that's your home.
I shouldn't use the word "I." It makes perfect sense, what you said, now that you put that criteria on the delivery. Mr. Timbley?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Let me just go a little bit further, though. I don't have any problem with number one and number two. I want to focus again on private residence. Would that then, for example, apply to someone who lives in an assisted-living facility?
Yeah.
My answer would be yes. That is their home.
That would also qualify under a similar dwelling?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's where you live, right?
That's pretty much an apartment you have.
Well, it's not, it's not, on its face, you have to make some inferences in order to get there. That's why I asked.
I have a question on that, too. If you have a facility like he's talking about here, assisted care, can the person go outside their room into the public area of the facility, or do they have to stay in their room? That's their residence.
Well, the delivery should be to them at their residence, so...
At their room?
Yes.
Inside that facility, okay?
That's the contemplation. I mean, I don't know, the police are going to arrest them if they step out into the hall outside their doorway.
In the public area, though.
But the goal is to make it where they live. They don't live in the public area, they live in their home. Right. I think, Commander, the goal here is to not have the marijuana being delivered out in the public view.
Right. I mean, that's the spirit of the language, for sure.
Mr. Kilde?
One real quick question. Now, let's say, because you brought it up, an assisted living facility, would they have to be under permission from the individual or individuals or entity that does own that facility?
Yes.
Or is it because they have their own room, that would be their domicile?
I have the answer to that one. The owner of a property has the legal right to establish the rules with respect to living there. So if a person is in an assisted living situation and they are paying rent, if you will, as opposed to having an ownership of the, of the residence, then the owner of the building can set the rules, whether it's an assisted living or an apartment building or, or a home. The owner can set the rules and they can have a rental agreement, if you will, that would say no smoking, no pets, no smoking of any kind.
Thank you.
I have a question on the accessory buildings. Is that in the law?
It is now. It would be if you adopt this ordinance. It is not a, it is not a term that's defined in the Proposition 64. It was a term that, that I, frankly, I drafted to be consistent with the concerns that were being expressed by Commissioner Murray and other planning commissioners at the planning commission meeting because they said to me, what is the definition of accessory structure? And I said that it was not a term that was defined, and their suggestion was that maybe we should define it, and I thought that was a good idea, and told them that I would draft up some language and present it to you.
But my question is, is the term accessory building, I think as a private resident includes a house, apartment, mobile home, or other similar dwelling?
That's a private, that's a private residence.
So how do we get to growing in an accessory building?
There's language in the ordinance that allows that.
Our ordinance or state law?
Pardon me?
Our ordinance or state law?
Oh, state law allows the, let me, let me find it here. Well, I can tell you for sure it's in our ordinance because if you look down at 19...
I know that, but I'm questioning whether it should be. If it's in state law, obviously, you have to. If it's not in state law, then I would think we need to talk about the fact, is that really a good thing? Because they, they built, put a building, they put it out where somebody, close to somebody else's house, and they have to endure the smell and the whatnot.
In the agenda report on big page three, it indicates the Health and Safety Code section, and it does allow secured accessory structure to a private residence for cultivation.
Tell me where, I'm sorry. Oh, I see it, I see it, I got that.
I don't.
It's on the paragraph A, indoor cultivation. Says inside a private resident or inside a fully enclosed and secure accessory structure to a private residence. Okay. So then I guess we have no choice.
But we do have a choice of defining what is an accessory structure, so we've done that.
And you did that, that's fine. Are we done with the commander? I mean, not...
Got one more.
One for him, okay. I think your green light's on.
There we go. I don't know why, I didn't touch it. It just went off.
It slipped down.
You know, if you've got someone, and I know someone in this position, maybe better now because they can't grow a whole backyard of marijuana, but they could smell it. I would then, she, Mike, you've got to come, during the seeding time and the blossoming time, it is really thick, that, the smell. And to me, that, that shouldn't be allowed, where you get a smell that's bad, that affects your way of, your living in your own home.
Are they growing it inside or outside?
Outside in the yard.
But now they can't.
Well, they can't do it anymore.
Well, you'd be, it'd be an enclosed thing, though, wouldn't it, facility? So maybe, that would cut it, maybe that would cut it down.
So can you open the window in an enclosed building?
Well, if you're talking about an accessory structure?
Yes.
Well, I didn't, I didn't draft for the, if you excuse the pun, for that option, I suppose.
You can open the window in your house. I mean, we can't legislate that.
Yeah, I don't...
It goes to what I was saying about, about building a building, you stick it out next to your neighbor.
Yep.
You open the window, and you don't smell it, but your neighbor gets it.
If you don't have a fan or air to the marijuana, it won't grow. So what happens to the fan and things that pushes out the marijuana smell when it's blossoming? That happens, that's happened to the school down in Carpinteria, where all those things you see in the field on the right-hand side as you're going north, that's marijuana, and it's right next to the school. They have to air the school out when they're blossoming all the time.
Well, we could draft to address that in our definition of accessory structure. As Mr. Vaca pointed out, the Health and Safety Code that's cited in the agenda report on big page three uses the words private residence or inside a fully enclosed and secured accessory structure to a private residence. So...
Yeah, it says fully enclosed.
It, it does. So we could modify, if you wish, the definition of accessory structure to say without windows or without, and the windows may not be opened. If you're concerned about the windows being opened, we can either say that they can't have windows. I think that would be a reasonable regulation.
Do these meet code?
I was going to interject in that if it's a permitted accessory structure for habitation through the building permit process, would have to have ventilation, light and ventilation as part of building code requirements.
Yeah, but doesn't mean you have to open them. So if you choose to grow marijuana inside, you can't open your windows.
I don't know that we could restrict that if someone's living in that unit.
Oh, but we're not talking about living units.
Well, we're going to allow it in a home also. It's going to be allowed in a private residence.
Yeah, but then you have to endure the smell, too. We're talking about building a little shack out in the back.
But you could have it in your garage. And you've got to have the building code requirements. You can't say they're going to have six plants in their garage, so we're going to just forget the building code and say there's no windows and one way in and out.
I don't think that's what we're saying. I don't, at least I'm not. I'm not saying to your house, I'm saying only when it applies to these structures that they could build...
Attached or unattached to the house.
What are we calling them? The accessory structure.
Right.
So I'm not talking about their house or their garage. But a little shack that you could build out right next to your neighbor, and there you go.
It's a challenge. The issue with the garage is that, yeah, it's true, it has to meet building code requirements. If you're building an accessory structure solely for the purpose of cultivating marijuana, if we wanted to find an accessory structure for that purpose, we probably could restrict it in that it has to have some sort of mechanical ventilation system. And with a filtration system, if you wanted to pursue that.
How big a structure would you have to have to grow six plants?
I don't think anybody's going to come in and say, I want to build a structure and I want a permit for it so that, so that I can grow marijuana. They're going to build an accessory structure of some time, some type, but not give you a reason.
Well, my guess is they won't build one that needs a permit anyway. It's not going to, they're not going to build it big enough to come in and ask for one.
If it's less than 120 square feet, it may not need a building permit anyhow.
That's what they'll do. They won't come in and not get a permit. I don't know. I just...
Six plants, that's a lot.
Has to be tall?
They're six foot tall is what they normally would get at maturity.
Oh, well, that's a building.
They can.
Yes. And you've got to give them, you know, one or two foot, two foot anyway, wide at the base. So now you can figure out how tall it can be.
It's just three and three.
Yeah, so it'd be a small little, instead of a chicken coop, it's a marijuana coop? I don't know. I just think, the only thing I, I want to make sure is we protect the neighbors and don't do it in a way that, because we've allowed it out and not in their homes where they have to endure it, that somebody else has to put up with it.
Let me ask the city attorney something. If they are allowed to do this, Mr. City Attorney, and it does cause a conflict with neighbors because of the smell, because if you have ventilation system, you're still going to pump it out there, and you're not going to grow anything with no windows. I'm sorry, you won't grow anything in that building. You have to have light. So if you have something that pumps air or leaves windows open when it's blossoming and has that kind of thing, it affects neighbors. Is there any way we can cover neighbors if that happens?
As a public nuisance, then?
Well, that would be a challenge because we've allowed the use. So if the concern is with the windows, I mean, I wrote down some language here, I could suggest it to you. You know, we don't have to make this decision tonight because if you want some further wordsmithing of the ordinance, we could bring it back to you at your next meeting. I would recommend, however, that we do adopt the extension on your urgency ordinance tonight, and then we could provide you some language with respect to this concern you have about the windows being open in the accessory structure and the fact that the accessory structure might be built in proximity to a, to a neighbor. I believe there would still be, and Mr. Vaca may know better than I, there would still be some setback requirements for accessory structures?
It could be as little as three feet.
So is it the, let me ask this, is it the consensus of council that you would like us to look into the provision that limits the use of windows in an accessory structure or at least requiring them to be closed during certain periods of time when marijuana cultivation is going on in the structure? And if you do, we can draft that language and bring it to you at your next meeting?
If you put something in the ordinance to the fact that, that more general, that these accessory structures cannot be, I'm going to use the wrong words, but a nuisance to neighboring property or something like that, would it cover all of it, then?
Well...
If you do something that broad, and then that would give them the teeth, if somebody called up and said, this is a nuisance because it smells, then you'd have something to go on.
Then you've got a factual issue of whether it is, you know, a nuisance or not. The fact is that somebody who's growing the marijuana has the legal right to do it under the state law. They're allowed to grow six plants. So their defense would probably be, under state law, I'm legally allowed to grow plants in an accessory structure. So now the only question is, you know, whether doing what I have a legal right to do under the law is creating a nuisance, and I don't know that a court is going to find that that's a nuisance when they're merely doing what the law allows them to do.
Let's go one step, let's go back a step. If you, you, they can only grow it where it's secured and out of view. Can it be secure and out of view and, and doesn't, and the smell doesn't go to so many feet from the home or something?
I don't know how you're going to put a, the distance limitation on that.
If it doesn't smell, I can go there.
Plus, smell is always a subjective thing. I know that people can say, well, I'm smelling this, or I'm smelling that. I mean, it's, that there would be proof problems. My, my suggestion would be is if the concern is that if the windows of this accessory structure are left open and there's fans or something else that are projecting the, the smell of the marijuana into a neighbor's yard, that we come back to you at your next meeting, I'll work with Mr. Norman and Commander Murray, and maybe we can come up with a sentence or two that'll try to address that issue, if you wish. And then if that is your direction, then what we would do is continue the public hearing so we don't have to renotice it to that date. However, as I said, I would recommend you at least adopt the urgency ordinance and extend that. Gives us the further opportunity to, to review this.
If the windows are left open, then it's not secure, is that right?
That's true.
Well...
I mean, somebody can get in.
They, they could, but in theory, you know, somebody could break a window, too. But I mean, does that mean that if the window's open, that it's not secured? I don't have the answer to that. There's nothing in the, in the state law that says that. I mean, if they have screens, for example, does that make it secure? Or what if they have bars on the windows? We could get into a lot of nuances on this.
Maybe we can go with what it is and see if something happens.
That's what I was thinking. Let's just, we, you know, we could wordsmith this forever and just go with the way it is and see what happens.
Since we've been talking, I did jot down a note here, and let's see if this flies or not. It would add to the definition of accessory structure, as you see it here, I would add this, that, and I'm not sure, did we go under the definition or we put it someplace else, but if the accessory structure has windows, comma, then the windows must be closed during all times that cannabis is being cultivated in the accessory structure. That's what I put together in the few minutes we've been talking about it.
I would like to add that I believe the drying process is also a period of time that creates odor.
So not just growing once they start to...
So when you cure the marijuana for consumption, I think that also creates a significant amount of odor.
Can I just make a comment? I mean, the bottom line to all this is that we're going to smell marijuana at some point. And it has a very unique smell, and it travels. And I think anything we can do to try to preclude other structures being built may be a good thing, at least limiting it to the level that we can.
And affected, yes.
And other people being affected. I think that's the key, what they do in their own home.
Madam Mayor? Yeah, I would, I think that what the council should do is take Mr. Pyrick's suggestion, go ahead and adopt the urgency ordinance tonight. Give staff a time, a little bit of time to come back and, so that they can discuss this from an enforceability, a pragmatic standpoint, because ultimately, with respect to ADUs, I'm thinking that this is probably going to end up being just one example of where case law is going to go in terms of defining, in terms of defining Prop 64, 64's provisions. So...
Although, you know, I just realized the math on this as we were having this discussion and going through when your council meetings are. If we don't do a first reading tonight, then we do our first reading on November 15th, then our second reading is either going to be your organizational meeting on December 6th or whatever the date is, or December 13th. In either event, with either of those December dates, then the ordinance isn't going to be effective until after January 1st. And I believe that we probably want to have our permanent ordinance in effect before state law kicks in and starts allowing the legalization of them. So with that epiphany, you might want to give some thought to the language I've suggested here. We can always come back and modify it later, but I did try to address the, the issue of the open windows, and I could incorporate Mr. Vaca's comment to say, the language that I had added was closed at all times that cannabis is being cultivated or, I put in or located in the accessory structure. So that, I think, would address the drying period of time that Mr. Vaca had said. We could put this in tonight, and then if we need to wordsmith it further at next year or whenever, because we've come up with some better language. But this would at least address the concerns I'm hearing council, some council members express about having an accessory structure that's further away from your house, but maybe closer to your neighbor's house, and allowing the smell of the marijuana plant to then be shared by your neighbor or maybe entirely smelled by your neighbor and not by you.
When they smoke it, the neighbors are going to smell it anyway.
It's true, but...
And we're not going to be able to stop them because they can smoke it outside in their yard.
You're right. They, they would be able to do that, then the only question is, how much do you want to provide for limitations on the marijuana? You could smell the smoke. Do you also want them to smell the plants while they're cultivating?
I've never, I've never experienced it, but it's really bad when it's flowering compared to...
Well, compared to when it's smoked.
I went to, oh, she used to run the Ball Diamonds. Her daughter works here, her daughter-in-law works here. Anyway, I went to her house and smoked it.
Oh, and better that you don't say.
Oh, my God.
Well, but they're, they're growing it outdoors, which they're not going to be able to do. And so will it, and I don't know how many plants they had, but...
They had it covered, you couldn't tell.
If they have six plants indoors...
No problem.
Well, then we've been talking for a good 45 minutes about...
You're talking about an attached dwelling, not a, in your house. You're talking about indoors in your house?
Bottom line question is, does it smell, does it smell bad when they smoke it?
Smoke it?
Or bad when it's flowering?
When they're growing six plants only.
I don't know about six plants, because they were growing more. Dave knows where it was, down off Landon.
All right, Dave, do you know the answer to that question, smoking versus growing and flowering?
Well, my experience has been that the odor from being smoked can be more intrusive based on a six-plant grow.
Right.
It's more controllable. But the smoking is going to waft and move.
There's nothing we can do with it.
And it says that they can do this in, in an enclosed yard, so...
That's right.
But going the other direction, we can say, okay, we can't stop that, but we can stop... stop this other piece," so.
I don't know what the other piece smells like, I'm sorry.
I don't either. I'm going with Mr. Morgan said.
But he doesn't, isn't talking about being grown indoors or only six plants.
Wait, when you're talking about indoors, I'm thinking you're thinking in a house.
It doesn't matter, indoors something. You said they were growing outside.
Indoors without some sort of ventilation and light. If you're going to have an enclosed thing, it's dark. It'll grow anyway. You're going to have to have something that lets it-
They're going to have lights.
Madam Mayor? Good. Can I suggest that we've talked through this issue quite a bit? And I agree with the city attorney relative to the timing issue, so let me withdraw what I said. What I think we should do is move forward, go ahead, adopt both the urgency ordinance and the, start the permanent ordinance on its way with the wording that Mr. Pyrick has provided to us. And then we can adjust as time goes by.
And what we could do, the language that I had suggested, the best place to insert that, in my view, would be in section 1955-040, which is a big page 14, after big A, capital A, which begins all cannabis cultivation, that one, and then the sentence that ends, "Secured against unlawful entry." I think that's where the sentence that I read would best be added.
I agree.
Okay. I hear a consensus, so let's give it a shot here. And I will request a reading of the title.
We have to open a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing. Oh, would you like to say something, Commander?
No, but the reporter might.
You're right, it is a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing. I have no speaker sheets. Would anyone in the audience like to address us on this issue? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing. And now I will request a reading of the title.
This is ordinance 1146, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camarillo, California, amending chapter 19.55 pertaining to cannabis facilities, cultivation, and deliveries.
I'll move to introduce the ordinance, amending chapter 19.55 of the Camarillo Municipal Code in regard to cannabis marijuana facilities, cultivation, and deliveries.
With the additional-
With the additional pervage.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Not please vote? And that does pass unanimously. I will then request a reading of the title of the urgency ordinance.
Yes, this is urgency ordinance 1147, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camarillo, California, extending a temporary moratorium pertaining to private marijuana cultivation and non-medical marijuana facilities.
So moved.
I'm going to move to adopt an-
Adopt it, mhm.
So your motion would be to adopt an urgency ordinance extending a temporary moratorium-
What the attorney said, uh-huh.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please vote. And that does pass unanimously. Thank you very much, Commander, and our city attorney.
On this topic, I just noticed, while I was working the puzzle yesterday, that Thousand Oaks is going to have one distribution and one testing facility.
Oh, they added the distribution. Last I heard, it was just the testing.
That's what's advertised in the notice of public hearing. In the star.
So now people know where to go get some. Okay, we have one more public hearing. It's a resolution setting the amount of water rates and charges in the City of Camarillo.
Want me to do it now?
Oh, I'm sorry, and I do, yes, you're right. We need to open the Camarillo Sanitary District because we will have a joint public hearing.
I'd like to open the Camarillo Sanitary District once again.
And this indeed is a joint public hearing between the two agencies.
Okay, thank you, members of the City Council, members of the Camarillo Sanitary District Board. Tonight, we are doing a public hearing to consider rate increases on the water side and the wastewater side. And we have Kevin Costewick from Raftellus Financial Consultants to do a brief presentation, but before that, I just wanted to give a few introductory comments. We do a two-year Proposition 218 notice, and the rates for, that are being proposed are for two years. They'd be effective January 1st, 2018, and January 1st, 2019. Now, if those rates are adopted for the two-year period, what we would do is, a year from now, we would revisit the rate study model. The rate study provides a nexus between the cost of service that's being provided and the rates that are being charged. We would take new information, new budgetary information for both this current fiscal year and for next fiscal year, and new capital improvement plan information from this year and for next year, along with any other variables that may impact the water rate study. Could be regulatory changes, any other types of information that might revise the rate model, and we would present that again to City Council and the Sanitary Board to see whether or not the rates that are being adopted tonight are still required. Now, at that point in time, you would have the ability to revise the rates downward, but you could not do anything, raise the rates any further than what's being adopted tonight. That's by law required under Proposition 218. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kevin Costewick from Raftellus to walk you through some of the rate study components.
Good evening, Mayor McDonald and council members. I'll be as brief as possible with my comments tonight. You've seen much of this presentation a couple times before. Our study this year kicked off back in April. We were working with staff in the spring. We held meetings with the city manager, with the Utilities Committee through the summer, had two study sessions with you all, and here we are at the public hearing for adopted rates to be implemented in effect of January 1, 2018. For the water enterprise, some changes since last year in last study. We had a break in the drought, but no significant increase or rebound in water sales for water demand. We've updated the Water Enterprise Capital Improvement Plan. The largest project, of course, is the Regional Desalter. We've included developer fee revenue in that CIP plan as an offset to future projects, and have included a $5 million Prop 84 grant for the Desalter project. And we revised our long-term water demand forecast to 8,300 acre-feet per year. So our proposed financial plan over the course of five years, again, we're adopting, looking to adopt two years of rates, but we look at a five-year horizon. If we look at our plan, we propose 2% increases each year for five years. What that does is it allows us to fund our capital projects and still meet our reserve targets for our water fund. Again, the key capital projects on the water side are the Desalter project, a reclaimed water storage reservoir of $3.9 million as well. So with the 2% increase in water rates, here's a proposed, or an example bill for a single-family residential customer who uses 15 units of water per month. Their existing bill is $59.20. Their proposed bill, January 1, 2018, would be $60.51, a dollar 31 increase. And then in January of 2019, an additional dollar 32. To compare with our neighbors in the region, you'll see in 2017, our existing rates were at the bottom, which is a good thing, $59.20 for that water service with the increase. You stay where you are among your peers with $60.51 per month. Turning to CSD, changes since last year. We've had some increases in operating and maintenance costs. A lot of those are one-time costs that have been incurred. Updated the capital plan on the CSD side as well, and included developer fee revenue. The five-year outlook for CSD, we're proposing a zero or no increase in revenue for the current fiscal year, and then 2% increases in the following four years. That allows us to, again, fund our capital expenditures and meet our reserve targets. I should note that in addition to those 2% increases in the out-years, we also propose a $10 million debt issue to help fund the capital improvement plan. And those key capital projects include the Pleasant Valley Road, Forest Main, and flood improvement at the wastewater treatment plant. So in addition to the financial planning exercise, this year, we performed a cost-of-service analysis for CSD. What the cost-of-service analysis does, and this graphic helps explain, is that different user groups use the sewer system in different manners. They generate different amounts of flow, wastewater generation, as well as the strength of that wastewater. And so what we need to do is we go through and look at what the influence of the plant is, and we account for the burden that each user group places on the system. As part of the cost-of-service study, we revised some of the methodologies that we use for accounting for costs. For the residential users, we've changed from going, from looking at estimated water use for those user groups to looking at actual water use. So we look at the low winter water use to remove irrigation from the picture, and we identify how different residential users use the sewer system. On the non-residential side, we've consolidated our strength classes from combination of strength, say, low, medium, high, and land use, to simply the strength classes of low, medium, and a high-strength users. In addition, we've consolidated the largest size meters on the non-residential side because they do pay a fixed portion, and the largest meters don't necessarily correlate to water discharge to the sewer system. So we've consolidated three-inch meters and above to the same grouping. So how that shakes out on the residential side, single-family would go from $51.04 currently to $53.65 in January, an increase of $2.61. We then have our grouping of multifamily classifications, multifamily residential, duplex, triplex, and condos. Mostly see a decrease, except for the multifamily residential, a 74 cent increase. And then we have our mobile home, low-income senior, and age-restricted group, which sees savings across the board. Current rates in this column are 2018 rates represent our cost-of-service rates. That's no additional revenue to the utility. And then 2019 is a 2% increase on the FY 2018 rates. On the non-residential side, again, they have a portion of their bill that is based on the meter size. That's a fixed charge. They all experience the same 4% decrease as a function of the costs to that group. The flow rates, again, we group, I've shown all the existing classes here. So we have both the strength classes, low, medium, and high, and our churches, schools, hospital, convalescent, public city, and industrial users, which will now correspond to a strength class. So if we look in this column that's filled in with green, you can see that church, school, hospital, and public city all correspond to this $3.91 low strength, and industrial $4.81 corresponding to medium strength. So we show current rates for our non-residential users. Our 2018 rates, which are our cost-of-service-based rates, again, with no revenue, increase the utility, and 2019 rates increased by 2% over the fiscal year 2018 rates. A sample wastewater bill for single-family using 15 HCF per month, $51.04 currently, would go to $53.65 in January, and $54.73 January of 2019. We've included a couple non-residential example bills here as well. This is general commercial or an office building, someone with a two-inch meter using 50 HCF per month. Their existing bill is $390.24. Their new cost-of-service rates would be $398.37, an $8.13 increase. Another example of an non-residential user is a hypothetical restaurant with a one-and-a-half-inch meter using 75 units per month. Their existing bill is $601.61, and their cost-of-service-based rate bill, January 1, would be $550.09. So they would see $51-plus savings. Comparing our residential CSD rates with neighbors, middle of the pack, going from $51.04 to $53.65. Showing a combined bill for water and sewer service at 15 units per month. The existing bill for this single-family customer is $110.24. In January, excuse me, in January, that would go to $114.16, a 3.5% increase. And in January 2019, an additional $2.41 increase. Comparing to neighbors for combined service, that's water and sewer, currently $110.24 for that customer, and you would jump just one spot to $114.16. These rates are based off the most recently adopted rates, so any rates that will be effective mid-year or further into this year aren't accounted for, but you can rest assured that some of your neighbors will see increases in their rates as well. And happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. Okay, well, we have two pieces to this, and so why don't we do water first, and then we'll do Mr. Kildy's sewer side. So questions on water?
I have one question.
And I could mention to everyone who's home who might wonder why we don't ask a lot of questions, is we've had, I believe, at least two study sessions on this topic and going over the whole methodology and so forth. Mr. Kildy?
So on the water with proposed 2018 and 2019, between 2018 and 19, we can and most likely will revisit this and see how the model is working and do our due diligence the next time we come around this. Is that correct?
Correct. So we'll do this in a two-year cycle. This is the first year of that two-years, adoption for two years, but this coming spring, we'll look at that second year and see if that increase is necessary, if it can be less, if it needs to be more. So we'll reexamine that next year.
And there is a wiggle room to do that within the confines of the Prop 218, and you can't raise it, but you can lower it, correct?
Correct. You can either, when it comes time, you can either adopt a lower rate, well, you can keep the same adopted rate. You can reduce it, or you can renotice.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trimsley?
I have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor, thanks. So the last, my understanding is the last time that the city did or had a cost-of-service study done on the water rates was 2014. Am I in the right ballpark there? Yes. And unlike the wastewater rates, which have been based on industry estimates, the cost-of-service study for water has, at least for the last several years, been based on actual usage, correct? Correct. I'm drawing a distinction between the two. The mayor is certainly correct. We've had two long study sessions on this. But I recall that there was a slide in the prior study session with respect to the city's reserves policy for water, and that's not in this presentation. And originally, well, under the current policy, the amount of the reserves would be, as I understand, a total reserves would be $6.7 million, based on a number of categories, and was originally proposed that that, that those policies be changed, right? That would increase the reserves by about $2.1 million?
Sounds about accurate.
Right. But has that been, so what is the, so is that reserve policy being changed by virtue of this recommended staff?
No, there is no change to the reserve policy. The plan will be to come back to the Policy Committee to discuss adjusting those reserves. So the reserves that are reflected in this study are, as the current policy states, 50% of the operating budget is the reserve incorporated.
Okay. I have some views, but that finishes my questions. Thank you.
And one of the big unknowns that we have as far as our capital projects is the Desalter, and whether we get additional grants, and that indeed could help in the future if we are successful there. That would come into play as we, as we look at the rates. So we will work hard on that and keep our fingers crossed that we can get that lowered down, the city cost on that, and that will certainly help our rate payers. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing on the water rate setting. And so the public hearing is open on the water side. I do not have any speaker sheets. Would anyone like to address the council on this issue?
Do you have a nonverbal one?
I do. What did I do? Did I pass it down? What did I do, did I pass it down? I'm seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's any questions or comments, and if not, at the appropriate time, I will accept a motion. After me.
Your Honor, I move to a dot resolution setting the amount, water rates and charges for January 1, 2018 to January 1, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Mr. Trimbley, I see you reaching.
Time for, time for comment?
Yes.
Time for comment, okay. I, I understand that the changes in the reserve policy originally proposed by staff are, are not going to be undertaken. I'm, having looked at this issue, this issue to me is somewhat different than the wastewater issue, and I think there's a dichotomy here, or a difference here, let me put it that way, between the two. I'm just simply not convinced that an increase both on residential and non-residential customers is warranted at this time. I'm willing to reconsider that view next year, I'm not in support of it now, I want to revisit the existing, the extant reserve policy, so I'm going to be voting no on the motion.
Well, I'll make a comment, and to me, it's not so much the reserve policy that really is unknown, it's to me, it's, it's some of our costs that are unknown. It bothers me a bit that we continue on the path of, of continuing to accumulate for those projects, not knowing exactly what it's going to cost. On the other hand, if, if it doesn't come to fruition, then we do need the money in order to do those projects. So I'm kind of caught between a, a rock and a hard spot there on this one. And so I'll vote for this one, but I definitely, before we get to the second year, we need to have a long discussion, and I'm hoping that the next year, not only will we not have to have it, we might even be able to bring it down, that's my goal in life, so for that, for the reason of that little bit of unknown, we don't want to get ourselves caught without being able to do the, the projects and, and continue to maintain everything else. That's the only reason I would vote for it at this point in time.
Your Honor, just one thing. We've experienced in history here, when we didn't increase them a little bit at a time, and it hit us all at once, then you had the house full. And so if we don't kind of keep up with what we see as potential bills, and, and making sure we take the conservative route, not the ultra-conservative where we'd get killed later, I think it's, it's right to move forward with this this time, and we can take a look at it again next time, because I'm going to have trouble too, if they don't show where it's needed.
Well, Madam Mayor, I mean, I understand that from a superficial standpoint, I, I'm more concerned about the underlying premise underneath it, and obviously, I'm, I don't want to take up the council's time tonight with going way, way down in the weeds, but I understand what Councilman Morgan is saying, I just respectfully disagree. I understand exactly what your concept is, though, with respect to having incrementalized steady rate increases over the year, as opposed to not doing any rate increases and having a huge one in year eight, or whatever.
Which we did once.
But I, I'm not, that's not the, that's not my issue, my issue is with respect to some of the underlying, underlying matters.
So you're feeling as though our reserve policy is too conservative?
I'm, I'm.
Our reserves are too great?
I'm just not comfortable, I'm not as comfortable with that as I need to be at this point.
And it kind of goes to what I'm saying, and if we, if we didn't have these major things ahead of us, I would agree with you absolutely totally, but I'm, it's just that unknown right now, so.
Well, and I have, you know, in terms of potentially issuing debt, I, that's another real discussion point that I want to go through thoroughly, but I think I interrupted you.
And maybe we would not have to issue debt if we, you know.
Understand, you got, it, it pulls both ways.
Mrs. Craven?
Yes, I'm going to support this, and whether anybody likes it or not, our policy is our policy. The proposed policy did not come through the policy committee as required by our policies. Another committee decided to take on a policy that wasn't within its charge. So when that policy gets to the policy committee and comes to us, we can take a look at it, and we can, I'm sure we'll have a study session on it, because it, we'll be discussing the city's reserve levels, and then when we look at this again, we may or may not have a new reserve policy, different amounts, but at any rate, we'll have all been through it. But I can support it, because I believe that we should follow our, our current policies.
Any comments, Mr. Kildee?
I agree.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? If not, please vote. And that does pass for yes, with Mr. Trimbley voting no. Okay, with that, I turn it over to Mr. Kildee for the sewer side.
Okay, so I've convened the Cam San District. Is there any other further discussion from staff on any of this? Any questions that we have of staff on this, as far as the sewer part of it goes?
I have one question, if I might ask two, that, again, I asked it with the water, but we will be able to revisit this sometime between 2018 and 2019, just like we're going to do with the water.
Yes, we will revisit it in that in a year.
I am trying to remember if we've opened the public hearing yet for the wastewater?
I haven't opened a public hearing yet, because I'm taking some questions at this point, but thank you for reminding me. So any other questions of staff at this particular point? Okay, so we'll open the public hearing, and is there anybody that would like to address this on the sewer part of this? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's any direction from directors, or any comments or anything, this is appropriate time.
Request a reading.
Mr. Trimbley? Well, this is, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is, this is a different circumstance from the water rates, and the difference is that now, or here we have presented to us, and by the way, what, how I voted on the last item and how I'm voting on this item has nothing to do with how impressed I am by the amount of work that has gone into this, so I want to compliment staff and our consultants on the amount of work that has gone in. On wastewater, we now have a new cost-of-service study, and that cost, that new cost-of-service study has now assessed or evaluated the actual cost of providing collection, treatment, and disposal, so that we ensure that customers are charged proportionally to the service received. And the city has a legal requirement to do so under Proposition 218, and that is that the amount of the fee imposed on any parcel or person as an incident of property ownership must not exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to the parcel. And that's what this cost-of-service study is all about. And I, as I understand it, then, we've gone from an old cost-of-service model, which is predicated upon estimates and industry estimates, to now going on, now going to actual usage, and that's an important distinction to me. The rates are being restructured consistent with the cost-of-service study. And I, I guess I'm the first one to say, I acknowledge, in the staff report, I acknowledge that, that, that no net revenue increase is anticipated. However, you've got a situation where generally residential rates are going to increase, and non-residential rates, particularly with respect to fixed meter size and to two of the three commercial loading factors, are going to decrease. So no net revenues overall, but kind of a restructuring within the whole rate construct, so people are going to see their, their bills change. I don't like to see rate increases on any class, but on the other hand, I think to make sure that the rates are legally appropriate, they should be consistent with the cost-of-service study to make sure that no one class of users is subsidizing another. So for that reason, I, I think the, the new cost-of-service study, since it's based on actual usage, provides support for, for rates that are, that are more appropriate under Prop 218, so I'll support the recommended action, even though I don't like the fact that some classes are being altered here, some user classes are being altered relative to the monthly amounts that they pay.
You could say they're being right-sized.
I would not say that, they probably would, it depends on what side of the, what side of the aisle you're sitting on, doesn't it?
We're voting on the aisle now.
There's actually, if you look at it, the majority of the, of the classes have a decrease, which isn't very often that you see that, so, you know, we'll take the mobile home parks have a, an average decrease of $1.13, I mean, that's a big decrease.
Yep, it is, and you have other classes that are increased.
But it's only $1.61, so, you know, it's, as you say, it's mixed up, but it is a methodology, it's, it's a change, and to me, I agree with you, I think it's a much better way of, of actually matching use to.
Well, I'm more about the, the appropriateness in terms of the defensibility of, of how the rates are done, and so, you know, having that whole background, but I won't bore you with that, but, but I, I think what we also have to look at is the cumulative effect of both, of, of increases in both, in rates in both water and wastewater. So I have to look at that as well, because it's not just one or the other, you have some classes that are going to sustain increases in both levels of service.
There you are.
I'd rather do it on the wastewater side to make sure that the rate construct itself is appropriate.
It's always easier on, on the sewer side, because it's, it's the amount to start with is smaller, so when you have a percentage, it's a smaller dollar amount, you know.
Well, if you look at it through that prism, sure.
Yeah, so it's always easy to do there. Any other, oh, I'm sorry, this is yours.
That's okay. Anything else? I just comment, that's why we do these studies, and I think.
That's right.
Any other comments or anything? Okay, so with that, I'll request a reading of the title.
This is CSD ordinance number 90, an ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Camrio Sanitary District, amending Chapter 7, Section 7001 of the district's operations code relating to sewer service rates.
I'll move to wafer the reading of the ordinance and to introduce it.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. All right, so with that, I will adjourn the Cam Sant and remember 15.
All right, thank you. We have one more item on our agenda tonight under departmental items, and it is an agreement with the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles regarding the former fire station. That goes to who on staff's taking this? Mr. Norman?
Mr. City Attorney, if you please.
Just give me one second. This item is a proposed agreement with the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles regarding the former fire station. The city and the St. Mary Magdalene Church and the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles and their representatives have been in discussions for several months with respect to the possible use by the Church of the former fire station for potentially office uses. As a result of those discussions, there's been an agreement that's been drafted, which would allow for those negotiations to continue in what is referenced here as an exclusive negotiation period, that's under Section 3 of the agreement, on big page four. The term of that would be, as specified in the negotiation period, which is on big page three, for 120 days following the effective date, and the city manager would have the opportunity to extend that negotiation period to extensions, each extension up to 60 days. The agreement also provides for an entry and inspection in Section 6, and that's on big page five, and what this means is that representatives of the Church would be able, and their consultants would be able to enter onto the property, perform appropriate inspections of the property to determine what repairs might be needed, get cost estimates of the repairs, and then consider that in the negotiations with the city. Since this is a real property negotiation, the negotiations themselves would be conducted, not at an open public meeting, but in, in a closed session setting. The reason this agreement is in an open session is that it allows for the council to confirm that there would be a negotiation period and the right to inspect. The agreement has been signed by the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles representative, and your suggested action, or the suggested action this evening, would be to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. I'm prepared to respond to questions if you have any.
So this is formalizing, I mean, we've been in negotiations, so to speak, informally, this formalizes it?
It does, yes, it did, it provides that they'll be exclusive. In reality, the, the Church has been the only one that we have spoken to, as you know, the fire station has a long history, there was an effort made when the fire station was from the county many years ago. There was a period of time when we were not able to negotiate with anyone, and I forget how long that was, but then we had that interim period, then we were able to consider redevelopment, we tried to get a restaurant use in there, that effort didn't work, so this is now where we are in terms.
Well, let's make sure we know why it didn't work, that the redevelopment was taken away from us right in the middle of the negotiation.
Well, there was that, and there was also the recession. Yeah, it was, you're right, Mayor Morgan, not Mayor, Mr. Morgan, Councilmember Morgan, that, that is what happened, redevelopment was dissolved, and, and we also had an economic slump in the, you know, late 2007 through 2010 period.
I think Mrs. Craven or Mr. Kildee, somebody down there, Mr. Kildee had a question.
Yeah, the negotiation period, counselor, is for 120 days?
Yes.
And then it gives the city manager, I believe, is it 260-day period of extending it if he feels that progress is being made?
That, that is true, and then if for some reason, after the 120 days and the 260-day extensions, there's still negotiations ongoing, and assuming they are making progress, we could return to you to seek additional authorization for further negotiations, but that is the, the period of time you described is what this agreement provides for.
I hope it doesn't go that long.
Well, we're hopeful too.
That was my comment, can there be, you know, I don't necessarily, language, it may be encouragement that we can try to wrap this up in the appropriate amount of time that it would take?
I think all parties are motivated to try to resolve the, the issue one way or the other in short order. Obviously, it's going to take the Church some time to do their due diligence in inspecting the building and coming up with their cost estimates, and then their internal discussions, but we have in our communications with them, and I know that Mr. Norman's done this, to encourage them to, to move the process along, and, and we're still intending to do that.
Your Honor, I'd like to make, I have no more questions, but I'd make a motion.
Do you have a question, Mr. Trimbley?
No, I just have a comment.
Okay, we'll take a motion first, and we'll have comments.
Okay, I move to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with the Roman Catholic Archbishop of Los Angeles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, now any discussion, Mr. Trimbley?
So I, I typically don't favor exclusive negotiating agreements as a policy matter, but there is always an exception, and I can't think of a better exception that ought to be made than under these circumstances. I, I, I support the agreement. I don't have the history that my colleagues have here, and I'm still in my rookie year, but my personal point of view is that the firehouse should have been repurposed many years ago. I think the proposed repurposing use makes sense. We received an email today from a city resident that I think resonated with me, I thought it was extremely well-written, and I, the, the resident indicated that, that the firehouse, they equated the firehouse with, with some, with some good dishes that don't get set on, set on the table but are stored away for many years and, and, and stay in the cupboard and aren't used, and the fact is, the firehouse has been empty for a long, long time, so I, I thought it was very well-written. I do think that the proposed repurposing makes some sense, or makes sense, and so I really support this agreement.
Your Honor, I have a question. Somehow, and I, I don't know, I guess I wasn't paying attention, but I thought we had an exclusive negotiating agreement with them. I thought the night, the last night that we packed the house with people from St. Mary's, we had approved one.
I'd actually do too. I'd actually do too.
Well, yes, you did. However, we sent the document to them, and it took them quite a long time to be able to sign it.
Oh, so that was a year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago.
So, they never signed.
It has taken quite.
It's been a long time. Okay, because it was in June one year, it was the last day of school for them, so that was about a year and a half ago. Okay.
So, the difference between the two is they have signed this one and the other one they never signed. Is that what we get down to?
You know, I frankly don't recall there being an agreement that was presented to them a year and a half ago. I know that, I wrote this one, I thought it was like in April or May of this year. There may have been a previous one, and I'm just not recalling it.
April, May of this year.
I have one comment. Again, I don't mean to belabor this point, but we all have been dealing with this for a long time, and I'll say this as gently as I can, I would encourage both sides to negotiate as quickly as they can and come to a resolution as quick as they can within the confines of what this says. Those are my comments.
And I think what we're saying is, is that we can't continue to do this forever, so something needs to happen. That's my comment.
Or all those other people who are in line to buy the building will get next season.
We've talked about what we would do if we couldn't find someone to use it, and that's would be the time that we would do that.
If we sat here and listed all the time that we have spent because of holdups, not us, holdups, I'm talking about the redevelopment district taking the property, I'm talking about us dealing with this about two years now, not our fault, we wanted to negotiate with them and let them, you know, and sell it to them. The four to six years, I can't remember, when we first got the thing, we couldn't do anything, I think four, five years, we could not do anything with it, because they wanted to clear the intersection and all that stuff, so Caltrans and.
That was because the county put it in the agreement when we bought it.
That was part of the agreement, that we couldn't do anything with it. Then, here comes Caltrans to redo that whole intersection and corner. Boom, there's some more time. This thing has been put off, not because of city councils, it's been put off because a lot of things holding it up.
I should add to that discussion, just for purposes of completeness, that redevelopment was dissolved in early 2012, and it took us two years to get the Long Range Property Management Plan through the State Department of Finance as a result of a series of conversations with them. I know I went to Sacramento with many city staff members to make our best efforts to accomplish that, and there's, I think, four or five different properties that were in the Long Range Property Management Plan, this was not the only one. So, there was a substantial period of time when we were in that discussion period, and we weren't able to sell the property during that time period, and the end result was that the property was transferred from the successor agency to the city, so the city now does own it, you do have the authority to dispose of it, consistent with the Long Range Property Management Plan.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that does pass unanimously. I believe that was the last item on the agenda, so with that, we will adjourn to November the 15th at 5:00 p.m.